Make sure your clothes are up.
Hi! Hey!
Alright.
Wanna head back?
Don't be ridiculous. This new ally you gained was Makoto? Just tell me the truth!
Makoto...
That's preposterous! If what you say is true, was Makoto also running from the police when you were arrested?
Now that I think about it, she did start talking a lot about the investigation from summer onward. Makoto aside, you mentioned one other important detail. Did Konashiro really say there was someone using the Metaverse besides the Phantom Thieves? Those words could just be taken as you shifting blame to this other person you know. But why would you fabricate such an elaborate story and then shift the blame elsewhere? There are two possibilities: Either you've simply been trying to confuse me with your lies... ...or everything you've stated is true. Have you been telling me the truth from the very start? That's the plan. Then again, I am investigating a thief who steals hearts. Very well. No matter how absurd it may seem, I'll reevaluate my stance on believing you, for now. In return, speak the whole truth and nothing but the truth. It's a fair deal. Is that acceptable?
I am thou. Thou art I. Thou hast acquired a new vow. With the birth of the Judgment Persona, I have obtained the winds of blessing that shall lead to freedom and new power.
Alright.
We're running out of time. Let's move on to your next target. I stand corrected. It was they who targeted your group first, wasn't it? The identity of your opponent... ...is this. We have no pictures. Even their names and identities are unknown. If what you told me is true, then this NAV thing you've mentioned wouldn't have worked in this case. How did you target them? Tell me everything.
Hey, check the ingredients in the fridge. Hey, what's up? It's not right. Not cute. That was the one the staff recommended to me, though. Won't that printer do? It'll do, but it's not it. Okay. I'll be right over. This might take a while. I'm leaving the store to you. Lock up for me if I don't come back. Something like that. What a handful.
And that concludes the latest news on the suspect Konashiro. This case is said to be a result of the Phantom Thieves' actions, but what do you think?
We don't know their methods, but I believe they are a menace that will threaten this law-abiding country. This dangerous group... ...tamperers with people's hearts. It's no different from brainwashing.
I see. You're absolutely correct.
I wonder what's going on. Didn't this happen a little while ago, too? Who was it again? You know, that famous artist.
Ah... Madurame, was it?
They punished those awful people, didn't they? The Phantom Thieves aren't at fault, then.
Hmm, that may be true, but...
Don't you think so, too, dearie? The Phantom Thieves aren't doing anything wrong, are they? See? Even he says that they're doing good. Oh my, look at the time. We should probably head home.
Ah, you're right. Thanks for the drink!
Yes. I've received the reports on Konashiro's case, but to think the Phantom Thieves would honestly attempt an absurd idea like social reform... You're absolutely right. I'm not pleased about the general public's support of them either. There's also the danger of the Metaverse being exposed with their continued action. Actually, there is one countermeasure he brought in that seems usable. It involves having the Phantom Thieves destroy themselves without our direct intervention. We'll set things up, so that those mental shutdown occurrences are their doing. Ah, I thought as much. I had a feeling that it was too brutal for it to be his own idea. Still... I think you'd go through such elaborate detail to crush them. Their actions must be that much of an eyesore for you. I sympathize with what you're going through. Well then... We'll clean this up quickly and put it behind us. Yes. A grand undertaking like social reform is beyond a group such as the Phantom Thieves. Only a few people are entitled to change the world. Like you, future Prime Minister.
Hey, it's me! Where ya at? What you doing? Don't be such an ass. I bet you're at home, right? We're gonna come over right now about the, uh, you-know-what. See ya! What's up? We're here to hang out.
That's not why we're here! We need to study for finals!
Why am I here, too?
You're one of us now, so of course you gotta help us! We're in trouble if you don't teach us, you know?
Even you're saying such things?
Let's leave those guys be.
I couldn't ask the last time I was here. But what is this place? The storekeeper doesn't seem to be around.
It's where this guy lives. He's got complicated circumstances. We can tell her about it, right? Actually, tell yourself.
That's... That's terrible.
Onusuke and me are pretty much the same, too. I mean, huh, it's not as bad as this guy's, though. It's just something we can't ever put up with. That's why we all became Phantom Thieves.
Hey, don't forget me!
I know, I know. We're all part of the team. By the way, Makoto, ain't there someone you can't forgive, either? Like, a heart you wanna change?
That's a secret.
Ah, there's someone like that! You could just tell us, you know? You don't gotta be so cold.
That aside... Do you have any intention of studying for the exam?
Not really.
It's fine if I leave, then?
No, no, I'm just joking! Please, teach us!
What was this term? It's phobia, so it's a fear of some kind.
I think it's a fear of open spaces. You don't hear it that often, though. Leave vocabulary and long sentences to me! I suck at proper grammar, though.
Ugh, even if we study English, it's not like I'm gonna use it in the future.
When it comes to you, your Japanese is questionable, too.
Uh, shut up!
Explain the writer's feelings? What point is there in that?
Aw, it's impossible! I can't memorize all these formulas! Ain't there a good way of cheating?
Why don't we take a break?
And that was the follow-up report on the suspect Konashiro. Now, Akechi-san... This case is said to be the result of the Phantom Thieves' actions, but in actuality, is this true?
Considering how a calling card was scattered about, I believe there's no mistaking that. The question is what the Phantom Thieves actually did. If they tampered with the suspect's heart, it casts doubt on the authenticity of any confession.
So then by tampering with hearts, the Phantom Thieves are fabricating crimes that may not exist?
We can't deny the possibility. There's no doubt that the Phantom Thieves are exposing hidden injustices in society. However, if this is done by sidestepping the law, their way of thinking is very dangerous.
So in a way, they're outlaws?
Yes. They're no different than the criminals they target. This cannot be overlooked.
I see.
I see! My ass! Why the hell are we being treated as the bad guys?
Just let them say whatever they want. More people are starting to understand that what we're doing is right, after all.
When I'm walking around in town, I hear a lot more people talking about us, too. And, the forum's been full of hype! Do you think we made it big time?
Don't get pompous over dealing with some street thug. Save it for after we deal with a bigger target.
Just gotta take down a bigger one, yeah? That was the plan from the start, anyways.
True. It may be best if we start thinking about it.
I bet we'll find one in no time! Wind's blowing in our direction and everything! I feel like we won't lose to anything right now.
Well, we'll decide on that eventually. We need to overcome our exams first. Now then, break time's over. Let's get back to...
That reminds me! The celebration party! Weren't we gonna do it after exams?
Y-yes, I believe so.
Where should we go? I feel like I'll study better if I got something to look forward to.
The last one was a buffet at a hotel. We haven't gone anywhere since.
Hm? A buffet?
Where would be good? Hey, what about fireworks? A fireworks festival!
Oh yeah! It's that season, huh?
That sounds good to me.
It's hard to ignore a buffet, but... I'll take the beauties of summer. Still, I demand that we feast during the festival as well.
Do you guys own a yukata? Will you wear a yukata?
Doesn't a fireworks festival sound good? You think so, too, right? Alright, fireworks festival it is! Let's look for a good one!
Study comes first, though. I won't let you off if you fail any of them. Are we clear?
Yes, ma'am. Alright, fireworks festival it is! Let's look for a good one!
Study comes first, though. I won't let you off if you fail any of them. Are we clear?
Yes, ma'am.
Hm.
Oh! Hey! Hey! Wow! Oh!
Alright.
Well then...
Good morning. Thank you.
I see...
How tragic.
Give it a try! Well done!
Nice going!
Alright.
Hey, hey! Hey!
Welcome!
Welcome!
Good day!
Wow!
It's somewhere. I can see it. See it! There's no time left!
Don't pass out, okay? Please head to the exam room. I see. Have you been studying hard? You're about to experience my best work ever. I'm very proud of it. It's exceptional. Here you go. Well, which do you want? Take care. I see.
I can feel it. See it. It's somewhere.
Hey, we're all here? Hey, we're all here?
Hey.